Good afternoon. We'll call the meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees to order for November 2016. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Cook, I know you've chaired this board before. My biggest fear always is that I'm going to forget the words to the Pledge of Allegiance to start the meeting, so be ready to jump in for me if I ever do that. The next item on the agenda is a roll call and recognition of visitors. Ms. Schlesch?
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter, Kent and Shelby Zimmerman, Roberta Eva Slage, Ron Shaver, and Daniel Yozah.
Thank you for coming. Tonight, we're ready for the open forum session. The open forum is a section on the board agenda at each regular meeting in which members of the community can provide comments to the board. One open forum period will occur at each regularly scheduled meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of speakers have signed up, in which case the chair has the discretion to limit a person's time to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, persons must register at the door prior to the meeting. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters with the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter is concerned personnel issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise under consideration by the board. Tonight, we have one person signed up, Chris Rossell, a student here on voter turnout. Chris, if you'd come to the podium.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. President, members of the administration, the faculty, the students, and the community. As a student at Johnson County Community College, I'd like to congratulate you on the high voter registration you have and the high voter turnout you have. The Tufts survey, which was done here at Johnson County Community College, showed that you have 3% higher than Kansas University's voter turnout rate. That's a laudable achievement, and I want to congratulate you on that. Only, you're one of the seven colleges in Kansas which gets the survey of student engagement and participation in elections. Kansas State University recently signed up to follow your lead and also get the survey done there. You're far above, well, you're above national average, you're above state averages, and it's a laudable achievement, and I just wanted to recognize you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your efforts toward that. The next item on the agenda is awards and recognitions, and tonight is a special time. Who's taking this?
I'll start this off.
Mr. President?
Thank you. The college has so many opportunities for volunteers in the community to be part of our campus, part of the community. And one of those areas is in the Carlson Center and specifically the group of All-Stars. I mean, this is a collection of incredible individuals from our community who volunteer their time to make sure that everyone can find their seat and manage emergencies and all kinds of different things that can happen when you have so many thousands of people visit our campus for a performance. So I'd like to introduce Bob Potemke, who's our events manager. Is that right? Okay. I almost made you an events director, so I wanted to make sure. Who handles that, who's going to announce the All-Stars of the Year.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and college community. Very proud to be here to represent the Carlson Center and our All-Stars of the Year. As I'm sure you know, the All-Stars are integral to the success of the Performing Arts Series and the other programs we run at the Carlson Center. They provide service and assistance to everyone from our guests who visit us as ticket holders to the road crew, the bus drivers, the various community and campus groups who use our facilities as rental clients, and everyone else with whom they come in contact. We do that very well. Our program is successful also in attracting like-minded people. We've had 21 new All-Stars join us just in October. 21 people who have come to volunteer their time, their talent, and their efforts to help us do exactly that and provide a world-class experience for all of those groups I've mentioned. Just in the one month since that new group of All-Stars has started, 21 people, Sue Aronson, Rosalie Ast, Ruth Ann Bean, Dawn Crumpley, Lona Davis, Deborah Dower, Carolyn Ekins, Pat Graham, Vicky Hamley, Kim Hoffman, Jean Holtzman, Kim Mapes, Barbara Martin, Ellison Jackie McGee, Marilyn Monroe, Olivia Mortimer, Gloria Riley, Sandra Sinto, Janice Boland, and Lynn Zegwartz have already, in one month, provided over 230 hours of service to the college, just in that one month. It's amazing. Our existing All-Stars serve as mentors, teachers, and role models for our newest volunteers, ensuring that our admittedly high standards are upheld. Now, the traditional thing to do in talking about volunteers is to attach a dollar value to their contribution to the organization, so sure, I could tell you that for the calendar year of 2016, from January 1st to date, nearly 160 All-Stars have provided over 6,700 hours of service to the college. And if I use the, just over $22 an hour that the Bureau of Labor Statistics has assigned to the value of an hour of volunteer time in Kansas, tell you that the volunteers have saved the college over $148,000. That's great, and that's wonderful, that's necessary, but I don't want to stop there because I believe, and we believe, at the Carlson Center that the volunteers' value is far more than that. You see, every interaction with a guest, with a performer, with a crew, with a community member, is a marketing interaction. Every conversation, every smile, every action is a chance to strengthen our brand, to have people walk away thinking the best possible things about us. I can recall one example from a previous venue where I worked, where a relatively simple act of kindness on the part of a volunteer in June led to a $5,000 donation to the venue's nonprofit governing organization in December. Somebody remembered that for six months and made a donation based on that act of kindness. That's how important they are. I've been fortunate to have been able to attend two weeks of training provided by the Disney Institute focusing on how to create a world-class guest experience. And one of the keystones that they teach is that our guests may not remember exactly what we say or exactly what we do, but they will always remember how we made them feel. And that's what brings me to the folks I'd like to introduce you to tonight. Kent and Shelby Zimmerman are two of the best we have at making our guests and others feel special and desired and wanted and valued and important. They greet everyone with the same smile, with the same sincerity, with the same kindness. They are patient, they listen, they project a willing and helpful attitude, they make great decisions in often less than optimal circumstances, and they project warmth and sincerity to everyone who may come in contact. In just the two months since I've started here with them, they've each have provided over 40 hours of service just in the past two months. That's an amazing amount of service for them. So they're dedicated and they're committed. They are exceptional representatives of the Carlson Center, of the Performing Arts Series, and of the college. And I'm proud and honored to be working with them. It is my pleasure and my privilege to introduce to you Kent and Shelby Zimmerman. Please join me.
We so appreciate being able to see all your smiling faces. We never thought we'd be able to come to a meeting like this, and we'd love for you all to see our trophy. We love it. Kent and I have been volunteers since January 2004, when we retired, and just look forward to every time we get a chance to come to any type of performance and greet people and meet people besides looking to be able to see the performance, but that's not the most important thing. Most important thing is helping everybody enjoy what they have paid to come to see. And we are always looking forward to having our right foot in the right direction, we hope. And we hope that we can do this a lot longer because we look at our calendar from the beginning of the month and think, ooh, look at all the things we get to do. And October was busy, but we love doing it. We both do other volunteer jobs, and I still have a part-time job, but we still want to work in this because this is very important. And we've been associated with the college. My kids graduated from here, my son teaches here. This is just a very important place for us, so we are happy to share all of this with you. Thank you so much.
I'd like to thank Bob for that gracious introduction and let you know that we really do appreciate the opportunities we've had here, and we just enjoy everything we do, and so thank you very much.
Before you walk away, you can come on back for a second. We've got plenty of time. I have to ask, first of all, you do a great job, and I don't know of any other venue in the region where they're so fortunate to have volunteers like yourself, so thank you. But since 2004, what's been your biggest memory that you've had of things that have happened there in the Carlson Center?
Oh, I'd say just meeting the realm of people from different ethnic groups. When we'd have the people from India or Cuba, or, no, maybe not Cuba, Colombia, different places. And I just love to talk to people from foreign countries. Like when last month, we had the ones from five different South American countries, and I got to talking to these people that she's from Peru, and we planned to go to Peru next year, and so I just was so excited to talk to them. And the other day when, what was the one that everything was sung in Spanish, the Marachi Band? And of course, they loved the music, but I didn't understand because she was singing in Spanish. But I happened to be able to talk to some people as we were greeting people out, and they happened to say, well, how did you like our singer? And I said, well, it was great. But I said, I wish I could understood what she was saying. And I said, it must have been something romantic, and this man said, yes, it was either she was upset, or she was happy, or it was a love song. And so those people just started to talk with me, and I just really enjoy something like that. And this interacting with people. I was a deputy appraiser for 23 years at the county, and so I worked with people. And when I retired, I wasn't ready to quit working with people. And so this just filled the spot, and I really do love it, really do.
Well, I'd have to add that I really enjoy all the great programs that Emily brings to the college, and I've had the opportunity, or we've had the opportunity, to see my all-time favorite, Garrison Keillor, three times. Thank you for that, Emily. Thank you very much for all you've done. I've shared just before, I don't know if I shared it with the board, but I remember it was, I think it was the fall, all-faculty event in the Carlson Center when the alarm went off. And it was the alarm that says, get the heck out of the building. All the sirens, all the lights are flashing, and everybody's getting out of the building. We don't know whether it's a fire, we don't know what it is, and I'm, well, the last one's out, and I'm trying to get the All-Stars out of the room, and they said, no, we're not leaving until you leave. I thought that, these are professional volunteers. Jimmy Doolittle said, there's nothing stronger than the heart of a volunteer, and our All-Stars prove that. So thank you, and please pass along the board's thanks and the college's thanks to your peers who do every night in the Carlson Center when we have something, serve the public. Thank you very much. Student Senate report. Student Senate President Donnie Witten.
I'm Donnie Witten, the Student Senate President, and I would like to thank the board for allowing me to address you guys, and also thank the students for allowing me to speak on their behalf. The Student Senate, we've had a little bit of rollover on senators so far this semester, but we've had a line of people waiting to get into the Student Senate, so counting the people waiting to be voted in, we still have a full Student Senate. And I think that really speaks to the excitement that each student in the Senate is relating to the student body, you know? They're carrying that over, that message, and people are excited to be part of what we're doing. We have created a committee to drive engagement, participation, and excitement on campus. This Spirit Committee has been working with the Athletics Department to increase attendance and excitement at the games. There will be even more corroboration next year as we bring a pep band into the mix, thanks to the hard work and initiative of Ryan Heinlein. They'll be playing at games and other school events. We'll also be syncing their performances with some of the Golden Girls dances. In October, we had our annual Trick or Treat for Kids. The amount of participation in this event was over the top. Many clubs and organizations sent out representatives to help run stations that included pinning spiders on a spider web, kind of like pin the tail on a donkey, to coloring and other odds and ends games. The attendance was up considerably from last year, and it appeared that everyone had a great time. I think the temperature was about 20 degrees higher in that room, too. It was really hot. We are currently preparing for photos with Santa. This is a fun event in which everyone can come to COM 319 and COM 322 between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM on December 7th and have their photos taken with Santa Claus. And I don't think that there are any age restrictions, so anybody can come and get their photo with Santa. Don't be shy. In December, we'll be doing our annual JCC gives. I hope that you have all heard about this at this point. We've been doing it for a few years and have been trying to advertise it all around the campus. Cavaliers have been recommending their peers that are down on their luck heading into the holiday season. We have 12 families this year so far. We've been hosting fundraisers and will continue to do so heading into the holiday season. We've raised about $500, but that number grows every day. Our goal is $2,000. If we reach $2,000, Dr. Sopczak's going to dye his hair. He's made that commitment.
Black or green or what?
Anything but gray.
So I think $2,000 should be everyone's goal, not just our goal. This is truly one of our most rewarding events of the year. We get to make a difference in, you know, some families' lives that share the JCC community with us. Also, it's not too late to donate or to adopt a family if anybody would like to participate in that fashion. JCC is synonymous with paying it forward, so hopefully we can get all these families taken care of. Thank you for your time and support, and I look forward to reporting to you all the great things the senators will be doing next semester.
Questions for Donnie? Please?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to compliment Mr. Witten for his presentation and his speech Saturday night at the Foundation's event, Summer Enchanted Evening. It was a wonderful speech and, I think, personal testimony about what you've been through and why such a scholarship means so much to you. So I just wanted to thank you for being there and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Donnie. It was a wonderful inspirational message, and I know that you know, it's not unique to you, it's scattered all across this campus. I thought I might take the time out to note that since our last meeting, we have been designated as a military-friendly school, in part because of your efforts in the Veteran Services Center that we have. So we're very pleased with your leadership role in that, too. And I think that we will be hitting up the Board of Trustees to help with your fundraising efforts.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Donnie, you were incredible Saturday night, and there were so many compliments, and, you know, it was amazing for people to learn what this college does for veterans, and you were an incredible representative for that, so I want to thank you. And how many job offers did you get after that night?
I think six.
Six?
Well, we're, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I didn't want to cut anybody off up through Donnie's thing, but as I looked at the agenda tonight, it looked like a relatively short agenda if we were efficient, so from here on out, be quick, don't hurry. I know, I didn't want to say it, but I decided to call it what it is. Be quick, but don't hurry. I think we can get through this and get people home tonight. So, the next item on the agenda, and I really said that because Dick Carter's next in the college lobby with his four-page report, single-spaced...
You know, Mr. Chairman, I can be very quick. It just depends on how many questions you like to ask at the end of my comments.
Please take your full time allotted.
Well, there's been lots of activity since we met last in November. This is November, since we met last in October, and one of the big things is an election occurred. And elections do have consequences and/or benefits, depending on how you look at them, and certainly that is the case here. Approximately one-third of the state legislature will be new or different this coming session. Think about that. 60 people are new to the process. Now, not everyone is new. Maybe someone was a House member and they're now serving as a senator, but, or someone maybe was a former House member and is returning, but regardless, they're counted as a new member for the purposes of what we do anyhow. And that means there's going to be a big learning curve and a lot of information gathering and sharing. And I think that we still probably have the opportunity, a strong opportunity, to have someone from this area in leadership, both in the House and in the Senate, and I think that's also important, especially for what we do and need done on behalf of the college over in Topeka. The breakdown roughly is there are three new senators in Johnson County and 10 new House members out of the delegation. And so when you look at that, it's essentially three out of eight of the sitting senators in Johnson County, and 10 of the 23 sitting House members are going to be new over in Topeka. The breakdown is a little different. The Senate picked up one Democrat, the House picked up 14, and so we'll see some movement in the committees, not only because we have new people, but because the breakdown of the partisanship determines who gets to serve, how many get to serve on each committee, and so we'll see a little bit of change there as well. Likely, we'll see some change in the chairmanships of the, well, not likely, we will see some change in the chairmanships of both the education committees and the education budget committees, and so that's something that we'll continue to follow very closely. The budget picture continues to be the same report that I've given you the last three months or so. The consensus revenue estimating group met two days after the election to sort of take a snapshot of where we think we're at budget-wise. They've not implemented some of the new procedures that I think the administration would like to see implemented. They will be doing that probably in the spring when we're talking about a new budget. Given that, we are looking at ending the year approximately $346 million to the negative. That's the current fiscal year, and next fiscal year would be approximately $444 million below what budget projections were. That means for the current year, budget cuts will be necessary. I don't believe that the governor, before the legislature returns, will exercise his statutory authority for allocating various agency budgets. I think that there is enough money in the bank, given some of the borrowing that occurred earlier this fiscal year, that they will wait until legislators arrive in January, and that will be one of the first things that legislators will need to do, is establish a decision bill and pass that to figure out what those cuts look like in the current year. The problem is, is as you move through the fiscal year, ours starts on July 1, it becomes more of a burden for folks when we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, when much of the dollars have already been put out there, spent, or encumbered, and that becomes a real problem. And so a 5% cut may not truly be a 5% cut based on what an agency's budget looks like. That's the concern. We'll see what happens when legislators arrive in Topeka in January. One thing that we have seen in the news is the Department of Transportation, and this has been a concern for a long time, did recently reduce the number of projects that they're going to let be bid this coming December. And what had been expected to be spent on highway projects was in the neighborhood of 40 million. We're now looking at around 8 million and a reduction of 14 projects to approximately 10 that will likely be let. That's if things go as planned. The Supreme Court was retained, and that has an impact on the school finance decision, most likely. I suppose it could have been the same either way. I don't mean to indicate that the retention changes the decision. Some might say that it will, but that is something that we'll have to know before we begin the budgeting process, is what the new numbers might look like for K-12 education funding, and there will need to be a new funding formula developed for K-12 regardless. But we do anticipate some form of an opinion or a decision around, right around the time that the legislature returns to Topeka. There's a few other things that I would just make note of. I've attached to the back of your report an op-ed piece that President and CEO Blake Flanders wrote that was submitted to the Topeka Capital Journal. I think it's a piece worth reading if you haven't already seen it. Talks about the investment of higher education in Kansas and what the returns look like in the economy, and it's a very well piece, and it parallels the board's long-range plan, their strategic plan, if you will, in his piece. The other piece, two final comments, this is not something new. We've been watching a merger potential for Wichita State University and Wichita Area Technical College. The issue revolves around finances, not so much the policy piece that would allow the two institutions to come together, but where does the money come from after the fact? There is some new language that just showed up yesterday in the board packet at the Board of Regents meeting. We're taking a look at that. I know that the folks at the KACC are looking at it as well. We're looking at it here at the college just to see what type of impact it would have potentially on other CTE funding or other funding streams that typically have been dispersed to the community colleges and what happens into the future. It's a concern, I'll just mention that, and it's something that we'll be watching all session long. And then finally, we always have our Back to the Legislature breakfast or some form of a program. We've done receptions in the past, and one of the things that we're looking at this year because of the significant number of changes in the offices is doing a reception in the first part of December. You will be notified as soon as we have confirmed the date, and then we will have some more strategic meetings throughout the course of the legislative session where we're visiting with smaller groups of Johnson County electeds. So I would stop there, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. If there's questions or comments.
Questions? If I may? You may.
WOTC is struggling, and I don't need to be out of the loop on that. WOTC's finances are struggling, and that's...
No, the issue would be, well, the issue is multifold, and Dr. Sopczak, maybe you'd rather answer this than me?
WOTC is doing pretty well.
I, yeah, I'm surprised. They're successful.
Wichita Area Technical College.
Exactly. Wichita Area Technical College. The challenge is, and you have to applaud the fact that they're even looking at a merger because that's something that across the state could possibly be, could happen. And community colleges are kind of shaken in their booths because suddenly they don't want, they could find themselves being a part of a regional university. That may not be what they've always had in mind. But applaud this merger between WSU and WOTC. The challenge is, is that the funding stream, the concern is that once that goes to WSU, when's it going to stop? So now, will that give regional universities the opportunity on a more widespread basis to start tapping into the community college funding pool, which is relatively limited in itself? And so you can understand the apprehension in community colleges with the prospects that this could kind of expand and go on. So that's kind of the big issue, what could happen down the road.
Thank you. I didn't need to jump in.
I have a question. I always have a comment. Based on Blake Flanders editorial in the Topeka Capital Journal, over eight fiscal years, from fiscal year 2010 to the current fiscal year 2017, higher education support has gone up in the state of Kansas by .6%. I would suspect that tuition during that time has gone up 15% to 20% at our Regents universities, and it's just an indication that our commitment to higher education has slipped because of our economic problems and fiscal problems, and I don't think that's sustainable to reach any of the goals that the Board of Regents or anybody else has articulated. So I don't know where the money comes from because we're $350 million in the hole for this year and $500 million in the hole for next year, but perhaps there'll be some attention to that this year. Any other questions?
Dick? With the presidential election and the talk of perhaps now taking a lot of things that have been resolved at the federal level and turning it back to the states, and then every state can do what they want, how does that work? How would that work? How would that work for Kansas? I mean, would we vote on that? Or do legislators implement laws to fill in those gaps?
That's a difficult question to answer because there are so many moving pieces. And there's a lot of pieces that require both state and federal action. I know that that has been some of the conversation. I think that it will, and there are a few pieces that we need some federal action on. So we'll see, we'll see how that plays out. I'm not terribly concerned right now that the pace at which things move at the federal government, even when people announce that there's going to be changes, is incredibly slow. But, you know, local control is not a bad thing, whether it's at the state level or at the local level, which is at the people's level.
Also, what earmarks are going to come back?
They have been making their way back. They're not called that, I don't, they don't call them that anymore. But there certainly is a competitive process in which some funding is being released through the committee process. And that has been something that has been making its way back over the past couple of sessions.
Thank you, Dick.
Yes, sir.
I know you have a Suns musical tonight, so you are released whenever you need to go.
Thanks, sir. I'm heading off to watch the Trials of Alice in Wonderland.
Can I go with you? No, we've got an agenda here that's very important. We're going to move now to the Management Committee Recommendations. Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee met on 8:00 AM on Wednesday, November 2. Trustee Lindstrom, trustee Cross were present along with several staff. That report can be found on page one through eleven of your board packet. I'll address the several reports before we get to some action items. Kate Allen gave an excellent report on the annual foundation report. The foundation finished the fiscal year 2016 with almost $29 million in net assets and provided more than $1.1 million in scholarships to students over the past year. And I believe of that 29 million, over 20 million is endowed. Trustee Ingram will give a more detailed report of the foundation later in tonight's meeting. John Clayton and Natalie Alman Byers reported on the Community College Pulse and Scorecard, two reports that provide ongoing metrics of the college's key performance indicators, indicators that we have held significant for a number of years now. The Pulse provides a forward-looking or leading metrics. The Scorecard provides five-year trend data to college metrics such as student enrollment, graduation rates, year-over-year persistence, employer satisfaction, and costs. Rachel Leers provided the semi-annual update on college investments and our participation in the Kansas municipal investment pool. She also gave an assessed valuation update and provided a review of the five-year budget projection model. Mitch Borchers presented the sole source report as well as a summary of awarded bids between $25,000 and $100,000. That summary can be found on page six of your board packet. Rex Hayes provided a monthly update on the capital infrastructure projects, and his report can be found on page 10. We have a couple of recommendations this evening. The first comes from an inter-local agreement with the city of Aletha. Dr. Larson made a presentation on this NRA, or Neighborhood Revitalization Area. In 2008, the city of Aletha created a Neighborhood Revitalization Area, and our college was a party to that. The rebates or lost revenue attributable to the college to date for the 2008 NRA has been approximately $13,200. The college has supported similar agreements with the city of Lenexa in 2007, the city of Gardner in 1997, the city of DeSoto in 2000, and the city of Shawnee in 2003, and again in 2012. It should be noted that a Neighborhood Revitalization Area program allows a municipality to rebate a taxpayer, to a taxpayer, all or a portion of the increased property tax, the key is increased property tax, incurred as a result of the improvement made to the property. This particular rebate is available only for the increased increment of taxes and may last up for ten years. Under the city of Aletha, NRA proposed now rebates are not being offered to single-family residential property, but will be available to multi-family residential and commercial and industrial properties. Ron Shaver of the Aletha, who is the Aletha City Attorney, is present with his colleague Daniel Oza and is here to make a little presentation and to respond to questions. And so to put that on the table, I would like to make the motion that it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the college administration to enter into an inter-local agreement with the city of Aletha agreeing to participate in the proposed 2017 Neighborhood Revitalization Area. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
And moved and seconded before we get discussion. Ron, did you have a presentation? Thank you for joining us.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, especially trustee Cook for that excellent introduction, Mr. President. I am Ron Shaver, City Attorney, city of Aletha. With me also is Daniel Yozza, who got to know Mr. Carter very well. He just came to us about six months ago from the advisor's office and has rewritten the entire municipal code. So we have no idea what the laws are in Aletha anymore. But we do know we have an NRA that we had in place in the blue area that you see on the map. This was, the intent of the area at the time when we created that district in 2008 was really to spark some reinvestment and revitalization of our downtown area. We continue to see that. And as I was mentioning to a couple of you before the meeting, we just had a major vote regarding the courthouse coming to our downtown. And we are needy in discussions with the county on making that a successful project for all of us. We, that particular district will expire at the end of 2017. And there is developer interest in creating the area that's identified in red on the map on the southwest side of the area designated. I'll give you a little bit more detail on that area. It's a primarily commercial area, some residential properties, but we've seen developer interest in seeing conversion of that residential use to commercial use. A lot of post-World War II smaller housing developments occurred there. Some retail that is in need of revitalization. It's the spirit and intent of the act and our intention of the governing body that really see an area that is in need of a spark here, to see some enhancement. And we think we'll see that. We've seen tremendous benefits from the current area. The properties that we've seen so far, there's been twenty-two residential and eight commercial properties in the current area. About a $4 million increase in appraised valuation, which has resulted in benefits for all the taxing jurisdictions, not just from the properties participating, but overall throughout the district, we've seen a great deal of spin-off investment as a result of some of these improvements. Some of those you might have seen are the Robert Brogdon GMC dealership, Bud Brown Volkswagen dealership, several other commercial and residential developments, of course. So again, thank you for your time, we appreciate it. It's good to be among friends, many friends here on the board. And we appreciate the continued partnership between the city and the board. Nice to hear from questions, Mr. Chair.
Questions for Ron? This is not subject to a public hearing, right? This is, it's not, no statutory public hearing, okay.
Right. Mr. Chair, we did conduct a statutory public hearing at the city council.
Right. How do you measure, what would be success in this? What would it look like in ten years?
I think if we see a bit of a transformation of the area, if you go in that area now, you'll see retail that's struggling. You'll see some commercial property that's kind of scattered. It's in need of some freshness. As I mentioned, we have some developer interest to see some reinvestment in this area. These are the types of projects that aren't well-suited for other incentive-type tools. Real property tax abatement under our property tax payment policy, the investment thresholds are very high compared to what we're going to see in this area. Our TIF, there's diverse ownership of land in this area, so it's going to be difficult to get TIF without common ownership. So, and so for various reasons, we think it's going to be beneficial. We're going to see renewed emphasis on this area, renewed investments, and we think it's going to be overall beneficial.
It's essentially a property-by-property TIF.
Essentially, it's kind of a hybrid between TIF and tax payment, yes.
Okay. Thank you, good luck, thanks, thank you for coming.
We appreciate it.
Welcome to Aletha, Daniel. Any discussion by the board or questions of staff? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those no, motion carries unanimously.
Our second recommendation is for a reimbursement resolution. Following the Board of Trustee approval of the facility's master plan last month, college staff has engaged in next steps for various capital projects associated with that plan. Although some initial funding for design activities was budgeted in the current fiscal year, Rachel Leers explained that the reimbursement resolution, as drafted by bond counsel, would provide an opportunity for the college to reimburse itself for expenditures in connections with those projects. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to adopt the reimbursement resolution, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to comment, just for the benefit of the public, review. As we adopted the facilities plan in October, this includes a number of major projects. A couple of new buildings for our career and tech ed programs, which as you'll remember are combined in really one facility. The renovation of some of our existing facilities to enhance another part of our career and tech ed program. We looked at the whole issue of traffic flow, how students and the citizens get around the campus. So that project also includes renovation to the front door of our campus, the gateway project, if you will. And so I just want to remind the public that we're looking in our, as we look at our next fifty years, the beginning of that era, a number of projects that will enhance our campus and also provide an opportunity for programs to grow and develop. And there's also a strong security and safety portion with all of this. So there are several projects in the project. The resolution calls for the bond sale of up to $50 million in this project over the next few years. And so I just wanted to make sure that we had clarity on what this is about, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions?
By the way, I would say, Mr. Chair, that this week, one thing I forgot. Part of this year's budget is, the RFP has gone out for architectural and design. And so that first step is in process. And I think we're looking for those reports to come back in the spring. And so we're underway with a piece of the project.
My understanding is this does not authorize the sale of any bonds.
Correct.
This simply allows us to recover the costs of our preparatory work when and if we sell bonds.
That's correct.
The $50 million is, I can't remember if that's the amount that was plugged in there and that was, we indicated we could do within our current bill levy?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those no?
Our final recommendation is a bid for contract improvements to the Hertz Steiner Child Development Center. You have the information in your packet about the bids that were put out. And it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $229,700 from RF Benchmark Construction, excuse me, plus an additional $22,970 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs for a total expenditure not to exceed $252,670 for the Hertz Steiner Child Development Center renovation, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those no, motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that concludes our report.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee met at 8:00 AM on Thursday, November 3. Trustee Sharp was present and trustee Lindstrom was present, along with numerous staff members. The first item we had was a presentation of the audit report from our outside auditors, Ruben Brown. And they reported that the college has received an unmodified opinion, which is the second year that we have used that terminology to say everything's okay. So it's an unmodified opinion. Dr. Larson, did you have a presentation, or did Rachel, or... Are there any questions about the budget, the audit materials that the board has received? The one thing that I always look for is a very strong statement that they had no problems dealing with our people and that we were open and transparent and helped them do their report. I always figure that the first sign of a problem is when somebody doesn't want you to look at their books. So I was very pleased, once again, to the entire team that worked on that. I know that's a big effort every year. All right, it is the recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the administration's recommendation to accept the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2016, and also move.
Second.
Moving seconded, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Not on the motion, and it's been a while since I sat on the Audit Committee. But I think a part of that nice, clean report we get, I was always impressed with departments that were seeking direction from our internal audit process in terms of help us make sure that we're clean and doing everything in a professional manner. So I really appreciate the professionalism of our staff and our internal auditors as we work with our external auditors. Thank you.
It got brighter in here as Janelle smiled from the back when she heard Dr. Cook say that. Mr. Trustee Ingram?
And I wanted to, I had actually made some notes about it when I read through it. And what I noted was well-established and well-executed investment procedures and segregation of duties. And that was impressive to me. So thank you for your comments as well, I agree.
I think in the two years I've been on Audit Committee and really had the full Audit Committee presentation, I'm feeling better about being a trustee because the one place you can get in trouble, other than forgetting the Pledge of Allegiance, is if there is some kind of accounting scandal or embezzlement effort. And I think we have the controls in place. I think we have the people in place, first of all. But the auditors tell you, you have to have the procedures in place as well so that you do segregate duties and nobody has access to all aspects of distributing funds. So congratulations to the entire team here for an unmodified report again and for helping the trustees to sleep better. All in favor of accepting the audit, please say yes.
Yes.
Those no, motion carried. Our Audit Committee quarterly meeting always includes other updates on audits, including audits that were just completed and efforts from previous audits where there were recommendations and how those are being implemented. We received an audit report on the banking and investments audit from our internal auditors. And again, the financial services staff was commended for well-established and well-executed procedures and segregation of duties for that. We received a quarterly project update, which is the ongoing work that the audit, our internal audit does in conjunction with all of the departments around the college. We received a quarterly report on the ethics report line, our anonymous report line for any, basically any complaints of any kind that we receive and then we address. We also received our quarterly report on the Behavioral Intervention and Cops Watch Team, where people are encouraged to report if they see somebody in trouble, somebody emotionally distraught, somebody with financial issues, so that we can address them through the college before they escalate. We received reports on the external audit policy. And there's one action item left on the external audit policy, 210.05. Clerical changes only, as you see on page 17 of your packet. It's a recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the proposed amendments to the external audit policy and the committee's policy as shown in the board packet at pages 17 and 18. Seventeen through nineteen, seventeen through twenty. I also move, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions about the clerical changes to the audit policy? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those no, motion carries unanimously. The final item, we had some executive briefings on follow-up items on prior audits, our youth programming, and we also learned about the proposed audit plan for fiscal year 2017. Our next meeting is February 9, 2017. I'd be happy to answer any questions or refer you to Ms. Vogler if there are questions. If not, we're ready for collegial steering. Mr. Musler will make that report. Collegial steering met on November 1. I actually emailed President Sopchik today because I had trouble remembering all the way back to November 1. But we did talk about a couple of things. I think we talked about, you know, communications within that group and how best to ensure that we have open and honest conversations where people can express different ideas without really fear of any retaliation, retribution, in some cases attribution. And I think everybody, it was a good discussion about, you know, what makes sense in various settings. And we talked about faculty engagement in legislative matters and then really across efforts with other community colleges in the state and I think entire higher education things to make sure that we're trying to do, be coordinated and cooperative where we can and to stand up for ourselves where we need to stand up for ourselves. So, Ms. Sharp is not here to contradict me, so I will leave that up to Dr. Arjo when he gets up here for Faculty Association. Human Resources.
Human Resources did not meet this month, but we will meet on December 5. So I'll have a report next month.
Thank you. Trustee Cook on learning quality. Trustee Cross.
Thank you. One of the senior trustees.
I appreciate it. We are actually both Gerald Lee. We finally realized...
We finally realized in June. That's kind of odd.
We are, yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, the Learning Quality Committee met on November 7th, 2016, 8:00 AM. Trustee Sandate and I were there, among many from the administration and staff. Amy Warner-Coke presented a sabbatical presentation regarding the influence of math anxiety and things that she did on her sabbatical. Heather Seitz did a sabbatical presentation regarding an award of an NSF grant that she and additional people throughout the country helped win regarding her sabbatical project involved the creation, validation, and publication of Concept Inventory for Allied Health Microbiology. And then the AHCI is used to accurately measure student misconceptions and can also be used to pre-test and post-test to measure learning gains of important microbiology concepts. She worked with people from across the country, from Iowa State, Georgetown University, to do this. I believe Dr. McLeod could correct me. We were the only community college involved in that project.
We were.
We were. And so it was a very impressive set of sabbatical presentations, and I just wanted to comment on them. There were, Dr. McLeod also presented affiliation agreements that we have been presented with. The first is an agreement with the University of Kansas to provide clinical experience for students enrolled in practical, in the Practical Nursing Program. And the second is with Ward Periodontics to provide clinical experience for students enrolled in the Dental Hygiene Program. Both agreements were approved by the committee, and complete details can be found subsequently in the Consent Agenda portion of the November 17th board packet. Janice Blansett also presented other agreements concerning a hybrid partnership facility use agreement, which is being renewed for the 2017 calendar year. This MOU will allow the library to provide classes for adults who cannot speak or read or have limited English-speaking reading abilities. The agreement was approved by the committee, and complete details can be found subsequently in the Consent Agenda portion of the November 17th board packet. Dr. McLeod also presented other agreements that we have with the Kansas City Scholars Program. The MOU will allow, will provide, excuse me, scholarship and student support programs for students and adults who are low and modest income across six counties in two states. The agreement was approved by the committee, and again, complete details can be found in the Consent Agenda portion of the board packet. Mark Van Corp, Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee, presented several changes to the committee. There were several deactivations for the academic year, and there were also other modifications for several courses, and I think now, Learning Quality Committee has reviewed the recommended updates to the Student Code of Conduct Policy and the Student Disciplinary Action Policy. The proposed updates clarify the process for implementing interim action as appropriate to protect the college community and campus pending the outcome of investigation into the violation of the Student Code of Conduct. The content related to the interim action will be consolidated into the Student Disciplinary Action Policy, cross-referenced in the Code of Conduct. So therefore, Mr. Chair, the only recommendation we have tonight is that it is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposed amendments to the Student Code of Conduct Policy and Student Action Policy as subsequently shown in the board packet, and I so move.
Second.
And moved and seconded, approved the recommendation of the college administration and the Learning Quality Committee to the amendments to the Student Code of Conduct Policy and the Student Disciplinary Action Policy. Are there any questions or discussion? I might, I mean, our student code of conduct policy is very comprehensive. I mean, academic dishonesty, cheating, plagiarism, alcohol and controlled substances, assault and battery, bullying, counterfeiting, discrimination, harassment, retaliation, dumping, littering, gambling, safety, sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, stalking, technology, communication system, electronic devices. I think it's worth the day and age to remind people that we do have policies for all of those things and ways to deal with them. So without any further discussion, all in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose, no? Motion carried unanimously.
Mr. Chair, that'll just about wrap up my comments, except to say that the working agenda of the Learning Quality Committee and as well as many other committees is in the board packet here for learning quality, page 31. I am personally excited about this. I thank the board for continuously assigning me to this committee. Trustee Ingram has asked my permission to attend the committee. I think anybody can go. It's open to the public, but I'm thrilled to have her participation if she'd like to go and anybody to attend. So apparently I can dish it out, Mr. Chair, but when you ask us to be quick but not hurry, I stumble through. So that concludes my report. Sorry.
No, that's fine. Any questions for Trustee Cross? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Treasurers' Report, and I guess you have that too, Lee.
I do have that, Mr. Chair. The board packet contains, Mr. Chair, the Treasurers' Report for the month ended in September 30th, 2016. Some items of note include, at page one of the Treasurers' Report is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. As of September 30th, 25% of the college's fiscal year had expired. An ad valorem property tax distribution of $5,174,976 was received from the county in September and was distributed as follows. There was 4.8 million from the general fund, $274,102 out of the capital outlay fund, and special assessment fund of $18,607. An ad valorem property tax distribution of $1.261 million was received from the county in October and will be reflected in next month's report. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of September 30th, 2016, in all funds was $85.5 million. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. And so it is therefore, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ended September 30th, 2016, subject to audit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the Treasury Report for September 30th, 2016. Further discussion?
Correct myself. I mean, it would have been distributed into those funds if I had a, I think I said that was true.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carried. Treasury Report is accepted. Dr. Sopchik, monthly report to the board.
Thank you, Trustee Musil. I apologize today, there will be no lightning round, but I promise that in December we'll have an excessive lightning round with many participants, so if you can wait till then. I hope you had a chance to read the monthly board report. This was really an exciting one. There were so many different events in here, I mean, collaborations, accomplishments, so many examples, but was also, what was really kind of interesting to me was how many outreaches we have, not just to community groups, but also to the local high schools and to regional high schools. So it was very, very exciting. It's a great report. There are a couple of highlights I would like to point out. One, for example, our English department, they do kind of a great books discussion throughout the course of the year. They have something called the Community Read Committee. Probably Dr. McLeod over there is squirming in his seat as I, you can feel free to correct me as I go through some of these. But on October 12th, Napoleon Theater, they have this Common Read Book that I guess goes on throughout the year, and it's "In Defense of a Liberal Education" by Farhad Zakaria. You've probably seen him on CNN. He's a journalist. And the keynoter this year was Dr. Lee Pelton, President of Emerson University in Boston. His keynote address was on "The Value of a Liberal Education in the 21st Century." This type of address and the opportunity for faculty, staff, and students to experience something of this nature is really outstanding here on our campus, and we do a wonderful job of it. Dr. Pelton grew up in Wichita. He had his BA from Wichita State in English and Psychology, and his PhD from Harvard in English. So it was an excellent, excellent program. Hats off to the English Department for pulling this off. You know, this past month, the KCADC, Kansas City Area Development Council, had their big deal down in town, 1,600 people there, and they talked about some of the highlights of the year. One of the things they mentioned from the stage was our continuing education activities in Logistics Park down in Nidderton. In fact, during the entire program and the entire afternoon, we were the only educational institution cited from the stage. It was a real honor, very exciting. Hats off to Karen Martley and her team for making such an impact down in Nidderton. Also, I have to report that if you look at their September enrollments, 3,214 total students in September across 252 different classes. That is more students than most of the community colleges in Kansas, I think. So Karen, that was fantastic. Thank you. Another part of that report that I think really stood out was toward the end, a report from our International and Immigrant Student Services area. It cited that we have 1,378 students from 110 countries here at Johnson County Community College. You wouldn't think that. Five countries with the most students, from Mexico, China, Kenya, Ethiopia, and India. So as we live in this global society, it's so, it's so good to know that our college is represented by nations from all over, all over the globe. The other day, I had the opportunity to sit in a presentation by VML Advertising. And VML is one of, from Kansas City, they're one of the top agencies in the country, apparently, and they brought with them the account group from the Wendy's account, and they were in part celebrating the fact that VML recently won the Kansas Board of Regents, like a corporate partnership of the year with an educational institution with us. And what an incredible opportunity for several hundred students in that audience to actually interact with the panelists who worked on this account, an educational opportunity, professional development, personal growth, something that both Mark Ratzinger and Gretchen Thune, who've really worked hard with VML over the past year, and there was a litany of things that they've done on our campus, which is so exciting, and especially for the students to have that opportunity. You know, since this last election, I want to share this with you. I've received several emails from students and employees and members of our community, you know, each strongly expressing their point of view about what that election, or I should say, the outcome of the election, meant to them. For example, one email expressed the point of view that our student newspaper, The Ledger, should issue a retraction of comments that were written in the editorial. They disagreed what was written, the tone. They believed that there should have been a counterproposal to that. I often feel that way about The Ledger when they write about the administration, but there is something called the First Amendment, and I think on our campus, we respect that First Amendment. I know on our campus, we respect the First Amendment, and that's what freedom of the press is all about. But I do also respect this individual for sending, taking the time to send us that email expressing his point of view. Another email expressed that this person's fear that one's rights, equality, and safety could be jeopardized by the laws that are expected to be enacted by the new administration. It was a very well-written note from, actually from an employee here. This person wanted to know if our college will remain a safe and equal place for everyone. And I think it's important to note that we believe, and I'm sure you would agree, that our college will remain a safe and equal place for everyone. And I'd like to read from our non-discrimination statement that is kind of a prelude to our discrimination and harassment and retaliation policy, number 420.01. I'm just going to read a brief little paragraph here. Johnson County Community College is a place where freedom of expression and civility are encouraged. In valuing diversity, the college recognizes the individual differences based on unique ethnic, cultural, gender, and political backgrounds, and the differences represented by staff in age, education, and physical ability. In a diverse environment, it becomes a responsibility of each employee to respect these individuals' differences and to refrain from imposing personal viewpoints on other staff or students. And the beauty of being on a college campus is that it's a place where you can express viewpoints, and they don't necessarily have to agree, but they must always be done with respect and civility for the other person when that happens. And that's why I think everyone here loves being on our campus and just about any college campus where those rights are ensured. So I wanted to share with that, with you. I know that Dennis is going to be talking about this later on. Didn't want to steal his thunder, but I think it's important that we reiterate our position on this, especially in light of what's transpired with the election.
Questions for the President?
Jerry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I looked at the library report, I was intrigued by the 8100 remote logins that took place off-campus from either students, faculty, and staff, and it kind of raised a thought in my simple little mind. My assumption is that I have to be a student or a faculty member or a staff member to access the library. Is that correct?
I think you have to have a library card.
Okay. So if I'm a, if I'm a citizen in Johnson County, do I have to be a student to get the card?
I don't think so. Does anybody know the answer?
So how would I go about getting that card if I'm a resident of the county?
Go to the library.
I, I.
My reason inquiring about this is that I, again, about two weeks ago, had someone come up to me in the morning after a morning meeting and said, Jerry, I need to talk to you. This is a longtime resident of the county, a very established attorney in Kansas City, Missouri, and he and his wife got involved with our horticulture program. And part of the horticulture program was students would come, they were looking for houses, I guess, as I understood this, to examine their landscape, and they'd make recommendations about landscaping. And in that process, they were invited to the campus to hear that student report. And what I heard from him is what I hear more than I'd like to hear. I had no idea of your sustainability program and the horticulture program. And I said, you mean your horticulture and sustainable program, because it's your college. And he said, that was the first time my wife and I had really been on the campus, and I had no idea what you guys are doing out there. So when I looked at that report from the library, what does that have to do with anything, was if there was a way that our general public, and I realize we have county libraries, and I realize that I want an answer to something, I just ask my grandsons, and they'll say, well, just give it to Grandpa, look it up. I mean, we get a lot of information on, in the internet, and interestingly, this morning, one of them, when you're retired, I guess you have time to look at some of these early morning shows, but the show was about what is the truth? And back to the concern we have of people responding to the election, what is the truth? And it was all about how much misinformation comes through YouTube and through other sources on the internet. So I was just, it just spurred my interest that, and this is not the night to talk about it, but how we educate our community to use our library resources as but one example. And then maybe through those library experiences, we can help educate the public as to having some idea of what's going on out here.
Well, I know that we are, we are connected with the other Johnson County libraries, and so we have partnership agreements with them, and unless something has changed, you don't have to be a student of the campus to have one of our library cards. You just, you go to the library and sign the forms, and you get a library card. So.
I've personally done that.
Yeah.
Been two or three years ago.
Right.
I thought 8100 remote logins was kind of interesting, and, but my ignorance is showing once again in terms of how do you do that? I mean, how do you, how do the people know about how to do that? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If, Mr. Chair, if I may.
I sure.
I thought it was actually a very relevant point and discussion that you made, particularly in light of all the post-election discussion on truth and information and sourcing, and part of our job is to educate and begin to give people the tools that they need to go find information.
Further comments on the President's report? If not, there's no old business that I'm aware of, no new business, so let's get right to Dr. Arjo, and maybe some commentary after that. But Dennis, thank you again for coming up and sharing with us the Faculty Association.
Okay. Well, thank you, as always, for having me and giving me a chance to address the board. And yes, I would like to follow up on some of Dr. Sopchik's comments regarding the election and its aftermath. Has he, as he indicated, there has been some concerns expressed in various parts about what may come of the new administration and how this may affect students, faculty, other members of the college community. Unfortunately, some of those fears have been realized, not so much here, but in other parts of the country, there's been a lot of reports of people being harassed or intimidated or worse based on their religious beliefs, their ethnicity, and sometimes their political views. And I do want to make it clear that some of these have been targeting people who support the president-elect. I think we would all find this deplorable. We don't want to see. We don't want to see this. We certainly don't want to see this at Johnson County Community College. So the faculty at our most recent meeting on Monday, a motion was made to put out a statement affirming on the part of the faculty that we believe that this is a place committed to open discussion, to nondiscrimination, to valuing every member of the community equally regardless of their religion, their ethnicity, their political views. We've opened this up to be signed by faculty. This is an invitation to full-time FA members, non-members, as well as the adjunct faculty. And so we are, as I speak, I would assume, collecting signatures. And we will hopefully, and not hopefully, we intend to make this public just as a show of affirmation of the values of Johnson County Community College as an institute of higher learning, which really should be on the vanguard of restoring a healthy, productive political culture, which I think we really do need. I would like to read the statement that we have drafted, if I can, just so we get it on the record. And it will end with an invitation to the board and the administration to join us in this endeavor. I've been talking to Donnie Whitman about getting the Student Senate and student groups involved with this as well, and perhaps we'll see something come from them. I hope so. So this is our statement, and it goes like this. "We, members of the faculty at Johnson County Community College, affirm a commitment to the protection of our students, faculty, and staff. We acknowledge the universal need of all people for safety and toleration, but the charged rhetoric of the recent election has inspired attacks, both verbal and physical, on groups in need of special protection at this time. These assaults are unbecoming of a civilized society and are especially inappropriate in colleges and universities, which depend on diverse people and perspectives to affect stimulating learning environments. That protection should extend not only to members of minority groups, but to students holding political views outside the academy's norm, as well as to faculty who depend upon academic freedom when teaching controversial or unpopular subjects. Therefore, we ask the trustees and administration of JCCC to affirm a commitment to the college's longstanding nondiscrimination policy and collaborate with faculty in providing a safe place to learn and work." Thank you. So, Dr. Sobchak, take questions if there are any?
Questions? Following up on Dr. Sobchak's comments, I wanted to hear yours first, too. But I, you know, there's been such an incredible level of angst society-wide, and I think it would have been just as high had the other result occurred because of the inability of whatever two sides you're on to talk about each other. I know since the start of the day, there was a, their in-depth article was about Thanksgiving, being people not going to Thanksgiving because they were afraid this was going to be a topic of discussion. I've heard that within my family. People moving their wedding because they didn't want certain members of their family to show up because they'd voted for one candidate or the other. And I get, I, I will personally affirm that statement, but also with the notion that I would have affirmed that statement had the other result occurred. The bullying, the harassment, the retaliation has been, has gone both ways, all ways, you know, whatever the number of ways there are. I, I'm going to try to take something positive out of this and say, this election season has taught us to be alert and be vigilant to what can happen when anybody bullies somebody else about their political beliefs or their religious beliefs or otherwise, because it has happened in society after society, and it's not, and the United States of America is not immune to it. I will take a little exception. I know what your thought was. Being on a college campus does not protect you in your respect or civility or tolerance from the rest of the, of the campus. And we've seen, you know, speech codes and other things. I, I think the Chronicle of Higher Education had one recently, the University of Chicago had a faculty administration student task force. And I thought their, their guidelines for what discussion should be had and be available was excellent because it, it was a way to enhance political and religious and debate on all of the hot-button issues today, but do it in a way that's civil and respectful. So I, I hope we continue to do that. I know the faculty's committed to that. I think this board's committed to it. I know the administration is as well. And it doesn't hurt to bring it up at this point because there are people that are, that are, are very nervous about what happened or what didn't happen. I've, I've told my daughters that America is bigger than one person, whether it's the president or the chief justice, Supreme Court, or the New Jersey leader in the Senate. And I think our institutions are strong enough to take whatever we can handle, but we ought to set an example on a call, on a higher education campus about respecting and listening to diverse views. So very much appreciate the Faculty Senate.
Yes.
Or Faculty Association taking that step. Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Arjo, for the letter and thanks to faculty for putting their words together in that position statement. It seems to me that this election process has, has perhaps revealed the gaps we have in our societies, whether they're economic, whether they're cultural beliefs, whether they're have or have-not gap. And it's going to take all of our efforts, I believe, to bring leadership. And so just because of the election, I wouldn't say we need to affirm such a statement or a position. I believe we need to affirm that every day, every week, every year, regardless of who's elected in a leadership role, because everybody deserves the right to be able to have the opportunity to improve themselves. And whether that's through a, a political position, or whether that's through a cultural position, or a position of diversity, that everybody has the opportunity, should have the opportunity, to become the person they were meant to become. And we do that with good leadership, and I certainly would agree, Mr. Chair, as an individual, that I would affirm such a position. But I would also say, that ought to be our commitment every day throughout the year, every year, not just when we get emotional about, did my person win or lose? And I agree, I think no matter who would have won, we would have seen this civil disobedience. I hope we're nearing the end of it, but I have fears myself of what's going to happen nationally and internationally.
I appreciate that. I mean, we have a long way to go. We will see what unfolds as we get into January and beyond. I mean, we're not asking for anything new. The college does have a very strong antidiscrimination policy. It is very appreciated, and I do think we have lived our commitment to academic freedom very successfully. We're just trying to respond to some concerns that have been voiced and just remind the community and ourselves that regardless of what happens in Washington, D.C., regardless of what happens broader, this is a college, this is a place where ideas get exchanged. We don't have to agree, no one pretends that. But there should be a common commitment of respecting the dignity of others as we all work on pursuing knowledge and self-cultivation. That's exactly what it's all about.
Thank you.
I did, if I may.
Good.
Mr. President, thank you for your statement or resolution. I would personally affirm it. I do personally affirm it. And I would say, a couple of anecdotes from my time at UMKC Law. One is from my litigation drafting instructor, who was a lawyer at a big firm here in town. And he taught us this phrase, "It's a big wheel that doesn't come back around." And I've personally seen Chris Kobach mocked and bullied at different events at UMKC, and then couldn't really stand it, to the point that he wasn't allowed to voice his opinion, or had difficulty at a luncheon, let's say, doing so. So in any form, it's just unbecoming of a civilized society. I appreciate your words. And just remind the academy, friends and opponents alike, that it, what goes around comes around, and we sure do need good things to go around.
Absolutely.
Is that all true between the Faculty Administration, Faculty Association and the administration?
Of course it does.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Not, not among the board, though. We don't even pay attention.
There was an asterisk here, but I didn't read that.
It's, it's a serious topic, and it is, it has, I mean, we've gone through, I'm not as old as I look, but we've gone through troubled times in this country. Somebody in the paper today compared it to the Vietnam era. And so we've gone through some really tough times where society's been split, and we've survived it. And I am convinced we're going to survive this. But the vigilance that you brought up tonight is something that we ought to have in mind, as Dr. Cook said, every day.
Absolutely. I did tell my students that presidents come and go, but there's always Aristotle.
Is that one of our professors?
You brought him in specially.
Thank you very much, Dennis. The next item on the agenda is the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. Trustee Lindstrom is our representative of that. And Trustee Lindstrom, I think, an indication of the leadership on this board is he is also the chair of the Kansas Turnpike Authority Board. And they moved their meeting to today, so he is in Wichita, chairing that committee. But he sent me his report. The authority met on November 14th at the KU Medical, KU Medical Clinical Research Center in Fairway. They received their, their annual audit report from Allen Gibbs and Holick Firm, received a report from Parker Communications, the public relations consultant. Their four members on the board are term-limiting off, Senator Kay Wolf, who was a governor appointment, Senator Jeff Melcher, a governor appointment, Mayor Mike Bame, who was appointment of the KU chancellor, and Chairman Ed Iler, who was an appointee of the Board of Regents. And so election of officers for the J-Cert Board will take place after the new members are appointed. And so we'll have two people appointed by the governor, one by the KU chancellor, and one by the Board of Regents. They paid expenses of about $15,000 for their, for the annual audit, a couple other smaller fees. They received updates, as they do every, every quarter, from the universities, KU Edwards Campus, K-State Innovation Campus in Olathe, and the KU Cancer Clinic. Sales tax receipts for the last three months, August through October, were up 3.85% over last year for the same period. And the next meeting will be on January 23rd at the K-State Olathe Campus at 7:30 a.m. I'm happy to, to listen to any questions, but I won't be able to answer them. No questions. Dr.?
I can add. Mike Copeland, mayor of Olathe, was appointed by the KBOR.
Kansas Board of Regents appointed the mayor of Olathe?
Yes.
Okay, good. The next item is the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. Dr. Cook.
Thank you. I have no report, other than our next meeting is December 4 and 5 at Parsons, I believe. And so it's a Sunday, Monday. I would report that Dr. Weber, single-handedly resolved the conference athletic question, and congratulations on that. But other than that, I have no report.
What happened? Is that real? Or is it a joke?
I was in jest. It's still ongoing, I think.
All right.
We're going to move quickly to the foundation report. Trustee Ingram.
And I will give it on the.
Bring this back to center here.
All right. The 30th Annual Some Enchanted Evening Scholarship Gala was held this past Saturday, November 12th. The event was chaired by Tom and Chaney Mitchell, with Clint Robinson serving as the sponsorship chair. Reverend Adam Hamilton was honored as Johnson County End of the Year, and the event was sold out with more than $632,000 raised to support scholarships at the college. That total is a record for the galas. I want to share the $25,000 legacy sponsors this year were AIG, BNSF Railway, Clay Blair Family Foundation, Ben Craig, Educate, Enrich, and Enable Fund, which is the Zamarowski family, Friends of Barton P. Cohen, Mindy Campen Scholarship Fund, the Kirk Foundation, Olathe Medical Center, and the Rehner Family Foundation. We also had four sunflower sponsors at the $15,000 level, which included Black and Beach, Empower Retirement, Midwest Trust, FCI Advisors, and Dick and Barbara Scholl. There were also three $10,000 Open Petal sponsors, Barton P. Cohen and Mary D. Cohen, Charitable Trust, J.E. Dunn, and the Kansas City Regional Association of Realtors. The foundation would like to thank the Johnson County Community College Trustees for their attendance and financial support of the foundation through the gala. And please mark your calendars for next year's gala on Saturday, November the 11th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. It was a wonderful event, as always.
Yes.
Any other questions about the foundation? If not, we're ready for the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items of routine nature and consensus that are typically considered collectively and approved in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board may request that a particular item be removed from the consent agenda, considered and debated separately. Any items, any board member would like to pull? I understand there is one for the administration, one item on the human resources report?
There is, and it is on page 56. It's item number four, employment regular Zachary Gredlicks. If we could just pull that one and consider it separate, I need to make a correction to it.
So we'll move, remove item four on page 56.
I'll move, I'll move the consent agenda with the noted changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose no? Motion carried. Okay. Dr. Corb?
I just, I'm sorry. I just need to note a correction in the title. It should read Program Coordinator of Continuing Education instead of Program Director. So if we can just note that, all the rest of the information is accurate. It was just the title that was.
So move.
Second.
Sorry.
Is there a motion? Oh. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose no? Motion carried. Thank you. Important that we get it right, to the best of our ability. We have no executive session tonight. Before I ask for motion for adjournment, I'm going to note that we hosted here the Heartland Campus Safety Conference over the last two days. I happen to know a little bit about it because my daughter was one of the delegates or whatever from Kansas State, and was very impressed with what Johnson County Community College did and the content of the program. So I think it's a great example of the ways we, we act as leaders on those types of issues. So thanks, whoever. I know Randy Ute, she said, "You welcomed them," and that was the highlight of the first five minutes, she said. It was a really good conference. Thank you for the efforts and everybody else that was involved. Yes?
In closing, I'd just like to recognize the chair's efforts tomorrow morning with Good Morning Overland Park that will be in the Marriott, as Trustee Musil will do about a three-hour Karnak the Great impersonation, much to the delight of everyone in attendance. So it's just representative of all the things that the chair does in this community to help support so many different areas.
It's Karnak the Magnificent.
Sorry.
We just went through how important it is to get it right. So I just thought, felt like, all right. Motion adjourned?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose? We are adjourned. Thank you all.[1779.01]